County Planning Board meeting that is scheduled for October 17th, I believe it is. It looks like we do have a quorum this morning, barely. Ms. Wood, incidentally, notified me this morning that she wouldn't be able to attend. And I understand Scott talked to Bernie as well and told him he wouldn't either. So, without further ado, I'll call the meeting to order. And has everyone had an opportunity to look at the agenda?
Motion approved.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Mr. Kessel, any further discussion about the agenda for today? Having heard none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. I trust everyone got a copy of the minutes of our last board meeting via email last week? Have you had a chance to review same? And are there any corrections or additions to the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Hudgens.
Second.
We have a second from Mr. Kessel. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. The next, Mr. Kessel?
Thank you.
Okay. The next item on our agenda for today, and for those of you that are guests, if you didn't know so, there's some agendas on the table up front if you'd like to pick one up. The next item on our agenda today is the discussion of the lighting standards and to be included in a forthcoming ordinance, lighting ordinance. With us today, we have Shannon Tuck from the Ashville Planning Board, and she's going to speak to us in just a minute, I think, and let us know what the city has done thus far about that. And hopefully she can help us a little bit, Joe, with identifying some non-compliant properties and maybe some compliant properties that are out there in the community right now to kind of give us a handle on, you know, what we're looking at. John, did you have anything to add before we get started?
Shannon's got to talk, and then we can, we can talk a little bit about, I guess, Gillian had handed out the discussion, or the paper that was presented by Progress Energy. We just received that Friday, taken a short look at it, but we can come back, you know, in two weeks and discuss that further, and, you know, we'd be more happy to make some recommendations there. Also, I think that there has been some discussions, just, I guess, among the board and a little bit with us about the possibility of maybe trying to incorporate some residential regs as far as ordinance goes. I think we need to kind of have some kind of guidance. As I said, the commissioners had just instructed us to go with new commercial, but if we're going to head down that road, I mean, we need to kind of start working on this because I was hoping by the end of the year we could get this to the commissioners, but we'll see.
Okay. Thanks, John. Shannon, would you mind coming forward and speaking to us, please, ma'am? Yes, please. Check that mic and make sure it's...
Good morning.
Yeah.
Is it on yet?
Yeah. It looks like it's on.
Is it on? Okay.
Well, good morning. As Mr. Alexander said, my name is Shannon Tuck. I work for the city's planning and zoning department. And about...
Four years ago?
Approximately four years ago, the city embarked on developing some outdoor lighting standards. We had some in place prior to that, but they had been through various iterations and revisions that certain sections had been dropped out. And what was really recognized was that a lot of it wasn't being applied, it wasn't being enforced. And so, we really needed to make some changes. One of the main things we did was we moved our outdoor lighting standards from our Standards and Specifications Manual to our zoning ordinance so that we could have more review, and it would become more customary and normal practice for plans to include outdoor lighting standards. I had supplied Mr. O'Connor a copy of a PowerPoint, and now, this is the PowerPoint that I had provided to provide some, or I had put together to provide some information to our council. So, not all of it's going to apply to you, but I have some photo examples in there, and I thought you could be interested, and I would just sort of run through them really quickly. So, there it was. It was November 2008 when we discussed this. So, our standards were first created in 1998. We did an update in 2002, and it was, again, as I mentioned, it was located in our Standards and Specifications. So, this process took us over a year, or almost about a year, I think. We developed a stakeholder group that looked at a lot of different examples and would, and went through each section, piece by piece, to come up with some new standards. So, it was with the input from some, from a variety of professionals that we were able to help put this together. So, this is the list of our focus group members, included staff, as well as representatives from the development community, Progress Energy representatives, some engineers, some dark sky advocates, et cetera. APD was also involved in our public works department because they had a strong interest in this as well. So, I'll skip over some of this, but I will say that our main focus was to control light trespass into the sky and also across property boundaries, and to create a safer environment, both by reducing glare, as well as shadows and some other things that come with the nighttime environment. So, this is our applicability, this is when it gets applied. So, here are some examples. We really looked at full cutoff fixtures as much as we can, and for, for the most part, most of our outdoor lighting requirements require full cutoff fixtures. We do provide some exceptions, and I'd be happy to go through some of those exceptions with you if that's of any interest. But this is the Riverbend Walmart, and I can't remember, I think this might have been PetSmart or one of the other buildings out there. But you can see the example of the full cutoff, that's compliant on the left, and the semi-cutoff, that is non-compliant under the new standards. Riverbend, of course, was built prior to the development of these standards, and so, we haven't, we have examples of both compliant and non-compliant out there. But in terms of good examples, I think this is a, that's a good part of town to look for both of the compliant and the non-compliant. The Aldi across the street is also a good example of compliant parking lot lighting, and wall packs, too, around the building. So, here we've got some, some additional lighting that's compliant and non-compliant. On the left is the, the gooseneck lighting that directs the lights down. On the right is some floodlights that are shining up. That would not be allowed today, and that's on the Cheddar's Building out at Riverbend. Area lighting. We spent quite a lot of time discussing this amongst our group, and our Progress, our Progress Energy representatives were also very interested in this. And I will say, I thought they were very neutral on this. I thought they were really listening to the group, and I think they were very helpful in that regard. Basically, they can do both. They can do full shielded area lights, or they can do non-shielded area lights. Some people prefer the unshielded version because they feel like it's more visible from a greater distance, it kind of provides this beacon all over. But again, one of our main goals was to cast the light down on the ground and not up into the sky, and so, we felt that this was kind of important. It's, it's a perception and not a reality. So, we, and we had found examples, if you, it's a little hard to tell on the screen, but the photo all the way on the right is a non-cutoff fixture that has been spray painted on one side to help keep the glare shining in somebody's bedroom window. And we have, and that is also actually one of our biggest complaints, our area lights shining in people's bedroom windows when it comes to lighting. That is probably the biggest complaint. And so, that was something we felt like we really needed to address. It does, it did affect the residential areas, because this is something, the area lights is something that a homeowner can call up Progress Energy and just ask to have an area light installed, and then it's a rental charge that goes on their electric bill every month. And the difference between the shielded light, it's, it's just a few dollars more for the shielded light for it to be installed, and it's a minor surcharge on the rental every Street lighting was also something that we really spent quite a bit of time on, and we ultimately, we had some concern about requiring full cutoff fixtures in all circumstances, particularly in some of our historic districts or in places where people wanted more decorative features. Full cutoff is becoming more and more common, but even just four years ago, there were fewer examples or fewer models for full cutoff decorative fixtures. So, we do have an example, or we do have an exception that allows a semi-cutoff for, which is the, just one step below the full cutoff, if it is a lower wattage, post-mounted decorative fixture. And that actually applies to our street lighting as well as our area lights. It's not as common on the street. On the street, we have better luck getting full cutoff. The city has also moved to now, we're going to actually be doing an update within the next probably six months to require full cutoff LED fixtures. So, anybody building a new street in the future are going to have to do these full cutoff LEDs. We're also looking at parking lot lights also being LED, but we have a committee looking into, into the viability of that. But here, again, out at Riverbend, the non-compliant fixtures, these are sort of the decorative ones near the front of the store, and then there's the, the full cutoff that is acceptable in the back. You can see those taller fixtures, those shoebox fixtures, and those are compliant. The Riverbend Bridge, again, has these street lights. I think, you know, the developer wanted something that was more decorative, so they went with this fixture that, at the time, couldn't be prevented, but we wouldn't be able to allow it today. And you see the non-cutoff street light, which is very ubiquitous all throughout the county. Now, here are some of the, I mentioned, you know, we made this exception for the, for the, for the cutoff streetlight fixtures, the post-mounted decorative fixtures, and here's a few examples. And I think these were actually out at the, at least the one on the right, I think, is out at the Progress Energy office. They had a number of samples that you can go out and look at in the ground. Now, this was four years ago. I'm not sure what's out there today. I hope they have even more or some better examples that are full cutoff, but I haven't been out since we did this. But these are just some examples, and they're pretty common. You see them throughout the city. So, the city would allow these cutoff fixtures.
And you refer to them as semi-cut-off?
I, I think I called them semi-cut-off earlier, but I think the correct term is actually cutoff. I always have to refer to our ordinance. I think if it says cutoff up there, that's the right, the right term. I get semi-cut-off and cutoff mixed up. Well, I'll check, I'll verify that for you in a moment, but...
Thank you.
Just to continue through the examples. Here's some more parking lot lighting. These are some semi-cut-off. I think the one on the left is from the Four Seasons, if you know that, a small shopping center out on Tunnel Road. It's where, let's see, there's a bank and a restaurant. It's kind of a Mediterranean-looking building out on Tunnel?
Cross from Palmdoros.
Cross from Palmdoros, yeah.
Lotting area.
Mm-hmm. So, that one on the left, it would be non-compliant. The one on the right also. The one on the right, I believe, came from the River Ridge Shopping Center. Some good examples of non-compliant fixtures out there as well. And when you're out there, you can kind of feel the intensity of the light, too, and it's, you, you start to kind of get a sense of what is compliant and non-compliant. Now, we just wanted to provide, the example on the left, we wanted to include, just to sort of think about what we expect to see more in the future. Now, that looks like a cutoff or a semi-cut-off, but it's actually a full cutoff. And we're seeing this more and more. I think there are probably a lot more examples than even what we saw in 2008. And that's an LED fixture, and I expect we'll see a lot more LED technology also. The shoebox in the middle is the one that we see most commonly in your CVS parking lots or any of your new parking lots. That's kind of what we see most often. And then some full cutoff with some shields. Those, those are, we have quite a few of those with our car dealerships. There, they have some stronger lights, some intense lights, and they have, because their outdoor display area is right across, along the street often, we have a requirement that you can't spill over, so even though the lights are full cutoff, it's, the, it's, the intensity is still kind of spilling into the public right-of-way or across a property line, and so, they have to shield them. And that was the case for these car dealerships. I think this, the one on the right is, it's out on Pond, Pond Road. I forget the name of the car dealership out there.
One of the new ones on...
One of the new ones.
The New Motor Mile.
The Deal Buick, yeah, I think it's. Gas canopy lights. If you saw the news, any, when Ingalls was going through their big Level 3 plans, there was quite a bit of discussion about canopy lights. They really wanted a very, very bright canopy light, lighted environment. It would not comply. They were asking for exceptions from the council. The council ultimately said, "No, we don't see any reason why." There's two parts to the canopy lights. There's, it has to be flush, flush-mounted, so it's full cutoff, so it's recessed into the canopy. That's not a problem. Anybody building a canopy these days, they don't, that's normal for them to do that, and that helps prevent the light from trespassing from below the canopy. But they also want such a high intensity of light that even though they're flush-mounted, that amount of light and that intensity actually has the effect of still spilling over, and it can actually reflect off the pavement into the sky. So, there's a maximum illumination that we look for under these canopies. Ingalls wanted something higher, and they asked for that exception. Ultimately, our standard was upheld. We did find, in that, I, I wasn't able to find the photo examples in time for this meeting today, but if you're interested, I can, I will go back to my office and find them, and I can email them to you. But we went around town and surveyed a bunch of gas canopies to try to find some that were compliant and not compliant, so our council could, could see. And we did find, I believe, two that were compliant, that were newer, and then some that were non-compliant, of course. And it's, it's tough because the, the distribution of the lights, whether they're flush-mounted or not, whether it's LED technology or not, sometimes that makes a difference in how it feels when you're under the canopy, but overall, I think it was, it was a helpful Here's some more examples. It's the older stations that you see, those sort of surface-mounted lights that are, that are underneath that shell canopy, but then you see your flush-mounted lights that are more compliant.
When you say the one, the Shell Station, is non-compliant, is it because they're not recessed on that particular unit?
Yeah. Now, when I prepared this PowerPoint, we didn't check for light levels. We were really only looking for the fixture examples. So, I couldn't tell you if the intensity of the light is, exceeds what we allow or not. But those other examples that I mentioned, that I can email to you later, those are all checking for the intensity of light, so that may help.
There's a new Shell at Charlotte and I-240. Do you know if that one's compliant?
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
Yeah, that is a good example. That, mm-hmm, that one was actually in the permitting process when the Ingalls issue came up, so we were able to say, "Here's another gas station that's applied a photometric plan. We know it complies. We know that it's possible," and that, because, you know, there have been claims from developers in the past that their insurance companies won't insure them if they don't have a certain level of illumination, but obviously, we have examples out there where they've been constructed and insured, and there's not a problem. Our ordinance does accommodate a minimum and a maximum. So, for high-traffic areas, we allow a higher illumination. So, areas around entrances to stores, areas like, for example, under a gas canopy where you want to make sure it's lit well enough that people don't run into the fueling station or a post or something, there's a minimum amount of light that must be provided and a maximum that you can't exceed. So, I think that helps provide some, some flexibility in their designs. Outdoor performance areas, our ballfields, we didn't get into this a whole lot, but I provided an example. We didn't make a lot of changes to those requirements, so I don't know if that's anything you're particularly interested in, but here's just some examples of what we're trying to achieve. In a nighttime environment, you can see how well-lit the field is, but how little light is escaping beyond the field, and that was sort of the, the goal. The new lights out at Azalea Park are this, this kind of light. Again, here's that, the LED, what do we expect in the future? And you can see the different kind of styles that that particular manufacturer provides, those different kind of caps to provide a different sort of aesthetic character. We use this photo example also, the, particularly for street lighting. We think it's important to reduce glare that comes from those non-cutoff fixtures, so the motorists aren't unnecessarily blinded. I'm sure everybody's probably had that experience at one time or another. But you can see the difference between the illumination of the light on the right and the one on the left. And the one on the right, obviously, sort of, kind of lighting all around itself, but very little actually being cast on the ground, as opposed to the one on the left, which is a full cutoff fixture, ornamental full cutoff fixture, but appropriately directing the light down.
And these LED lights, is the LED pointing directly down, or is it reflected off of something in the light?
You know, that's a good question. I think probably, like in this ornamental, I'm expecting most of it's reflected down. You know, those caps, I think, usually have a reflector inside that's kind of shedding it down. But the LED technology is a little new to me, so I'm not real familiar with those fixtures. I know that it's usually multiple small lights, so I'm not, I couldn't say for sure. We did outreach to some of our major stakeholders. In addition to those representatives that we had on our committee, we also made sure we circulated this proposed draft to, in case we had, you know, in case there was something, we didn't want any unintended consequences. We knew Mission was looking at some updates, and we wanted to make sure that it wasn't going to be a problem for them. We also, a couple of our engineering companies and Crossland Development was doing the Biltmore Park Town Center. We wanted to make sure we wouldn't create any problems for them as well. And I don't recall having received any comments. I know Mission was interested, and so, we gave them more information. They seem satisfied. I don't, I don't recall if we got any comments from anybody else. And that was it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions? I'm sure you do. Does the city have a sunset provision, and if so, how many years is it?
We, the only sunset provision we have are for those area lights, the, those, well, the, the area, the barnyard lights, that a lot of people often call them, the ones that...
The dust-to-dawn yard lights.
The dust-to-dawn yard lights. And that's because Progress Energy had a lease period. That was one of the things that they were able to sort of explain to us, is that all of those lights are, fall under, I think it was a seven-year lease.
Five-year lease.
Five-year lease, thank you. Maximum of five years. So, we knew that it's, within five years, those individuals would have to get a new one, and we wanted to make sure that whatever came in after five years would be full cutoff.
So, if I drive around the city and I've seen some lights that are not in compliance, but they're grandfathered, is what you're saying?
Until they're leases up.
Other than the area lights?
Mm-hmm, until they're leases up, for those dust-to-dawn lights. But for the parking lot lights, all of those, those are, those are grandfathered until somebody does a major renovation or replaces all of the lights.
Okay. Thank you.
What was your feedback from law enforcement?
They, they liked the reduction of glare, and they wanted to make sure that any new lighting plans didn't create more shadows. And so, they were actually interested, the other thing that they were interested in was, they didn't want us to acquire lighting, because sometimes lighting and not lighting well enough creates more of a problem for, for law enforcement. So, if it's not lit, they feel like that's a discouragement for people to, you know, go into that area if it's not lit. But if it's lit a little bit and lit poorly, that's what they were concerned about. That, and, like I said, creating very long shadows, which is actually less of a problem with full cutoff fixtures.
Okay. So, for us in the county, if we have subdivisions or if we mirror the city and we have subdivisions with street lights that, under your ordinance, are non-compliant, they would be good forever unless they were changed for some other reason?
Unless they changed, yeah.
Okay.
Now, the city owns, they're, you know, after a period of time, we, we gain control of those lights, and so, we're in the process of replacing a lot of our, I mean, it's a new program. We haven't, it's, they're expensive, it's limited what we can do every year, but we're in the process of swapping out a lot of those non-compliant fixtures with the new full cutoff LED fixtures. So, because we control our rights-of-way, we can do that. Now, we have some private subdivisions where the streets remain privately maintained, like the Ramble, but, so we won't, we won't ever be able to go in there and change out their fixtures.
Let me...
See some of those in the kennel.
Let me, let me ask you this question. I'm going to give you a theoretical. If a convenience store owner slash service station came to you and they had to tear down their canopy, not their marketing facility, but their canopy covering their fueling stations and this type of thing, because of regulatory reasons, in other words, their tanks are outdated and they're having to replace them or whatever it may be, would they continue to be grandfathered, or, I think I know the answer, or would they have to become compliant with the new ordinance when they re-erected their canopy?
If they are tearing down the canopy, the new canopy will have to comply.
Okay.
And that's almost what happened with that Shell Station that you mentioned on Charlotte Street near 240. They actually didn't even, in that case, they didn't even tear down the canopy, but they took all of those lights and they basically gutted all the electrical out of it. So, with their new electrical permit, we were sure to flag it and say, "All of the new fixtures have to be compliant."
Okay. In that same scenario, did, if they had any other area lighting, did they have to change it over to, even though that wasn't in their plan?
Nope.
Okay.
Only that, that they were disturbing, basically?
Yeah, basically, that's right.
Okay.
Now, the one exception to that is when we have very large projects, like if we had a big conditional use permit level project, and, and only if, I think, there was control or, or, not control, excuse me, there was some sort of nuisance issue that we were aware of, you know, that they had grossly non-compliant lighting, we might consider asking them to use full cutoff fixtures, or adding shields is more common. We may ask them to consider adding shields. That hasn't come up, but that is something we discussed during our stakeholder group, that in order to mitigate any impact as a result of their expansion or whatever, we could ask for that. But we, we use that very judiciously. If it's not a problem, we don't ask for that kind of improvement.
Okay. Anyone have anything else? Well, Shannon, that's been very, most helpful. Really appreciate it.
I'm glad.
And we were looking for some examples, and I think most of us are familiar with those that you provided down at Riverbend and River Ridge and some of the car lots, and that was very helpful.
If it's helpful to the, the board to know, too, our biggest challenge to enforcing this ordinance has been, not the gas canopies, like you might think, it's been floodlights. That is the hardest one for us to be able to get people. A lot of folks don't recognize that there's a standard that would control the floodlight, and there are circumstances where people want to use floodlight, where that sort of, the overhead downward lighting is more challenging. To give you an example, the Fairway Outdoor billboards. They recently got new permits for new billboards, and they installed those up-aimed floodlights, and they're not allowed to do that, and so, we've been trying to work with them on some other alternative. This is in our development standards, so a variance before the Board of Adjustment is available. We also provide some minor exceptions through the ordinance when there's a practical impossibility for downward-aimed lighting.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate you coming, and again, it was very helpful. You know, we've been given some language revisions today that John said that they haven't, staff has not had a chance to review yet, and certainly, we haven't either. So, I'd ask you to consider those before we meet again, in early November. And I would suggest that if you've got any comments, as you read the proposed languages it is for us today, that I believe, if you, if you don't mind, go ahead and communicate via email or by telephone call with the staff and share that with them. Is that okay, John?
Yes, I mean, when you, when you go through and look, I mean, there is a question in here. If we're looking at floodlights, then we need to do something other than on a temporary basis. That was one of the notes, I believe it's on page five, that was put in. Also, is that, you know, we added the language about semi, semi-cutoffs, and, you know, just make sure that we're heading in the right direction, especially after Shannon had talked. Now, the, this, this proposal is strictly for new construction, so if somebody comes in and tears the canopy down, it's not like, it's not like zoning or something like that. It's, okay, you tear it down, you can put it back. I don't consider that new construction. Now, this proposal is strictly for new construction, so if somebody comes in and tears the canopy down, it's not like zoning or something like that. It's, okay, you tear it down, you can put it back. I don't consider that new construction.
Okay.
I think you need some kind of guidance if you want to go in another direction there.
Okay.
It's something that we talked about on staff level, but I was just going by what I was directed from the commissioners.
Okay. Well, that gets back to the question I asked Shannon and the way the city regulates that, and we would be going a different direction based on what you're saying.
Exactly.
If we choose to do so.
Exactly.
As a board. And one of the other things we've got to consider, and we need to talk about here today, I think, and John posed the question to us earlier, do we want this lighting ordinance to encompass residential use?
Do what?
Do we want it to encompass residential as well as commercial? What we've got before us, Joe, right now, is really directed towards commercial. Do we want to bring in the residential piece as well, which gets into the area lighting, I guess, the security lighting and that type of thing?
And street lighting.
Yep, street lighting.
Yeah, I would have to agree with Shannon. Where I get the complaints is what's called the barn lights, or the lights that you go to Lowe's and buy for whatever, I guess, thirty, forty dollars, that look like a street kind of light. It's just, you know, focuses lights everywhere, and somebody's calling about, "The light's shining in my bedroom window." That is the, I guess, the number-one complaint.
What's your pleasure with regard to that?
I think last time, we heard a lot from different citizens, and one of the statements seemed to say that, on one hand, we need to be careful about... With regard to going into residential, we need to be careful about sticking our fist in the Tar Baby, and you can get too much, you can get too far, too complicated, and non-enforceable. But to the extent of the street lights and nuisance post lights, the dusk-to-dawn lights, I'd like to see us go that direction, plus the sunset provision.
Okay.
I don't think that would be too much, and I think that'd make citizens really happy.
Rod's in agreement. What do you guys think?
I'm not opposed to that.
Yeah, I feel the same way. I think we need to kind of... If we're going to address this subject, I think we need to rope in the residential piece as well.
Okay, but just like I say, just those topics, or those three topics that you talked about, Joe initially threw out on the table then, I mean, the street lighting.
Right.
The barn lighting, and then to put some kind of sunset...
Sunset clause on it, yeah. Yeah, I think we definitely would incorporate that in there, yeah. Yeah. Well, I guess what I would ask staff to do before we meet in early November, now that we've had some examples identified for us, I think we can all ride out and take a look in the next couple, three weeks. But I guess what we would do is ask staff to continue to work on, and now incorporate the three elements that Joe mentioned in there, and see if you can create some language for us to look at our next meeting related to the residential piece.
Okay. Also, I mentioned this to the chairman a while ago, but I want to apologize. I thought I had a lighting engineer lined up, but he was having company today, so... Oh, okay. Good.
There he is.
We do have one, but I thought I was going to have another one, but sure, then we can have a lighting engineer come up and talk a little bit about...
Can I ask you who you're with?
Reese Nolan, the Michaela engineering.
Okay, yeah. Are you... Did you come today prepared to make a presentation, or you just came to observe? Okay.
I came to observe.
Well, that's fine. That's fine.
Or any comments that...
Yeah, we can, you know, we made a call, I guess the original guy that I had talked to fell through and made an emergency call to Reese Nolan on Thursday through an architect. And then Reese Nolan's not open on Friday, and so then it was like, "Oh, Lord, we couldn't make it." So anyway, we'll get with the representative from Reese Nolan and talk about that for the next meeting, so that we can have something lined up for you.
Okay, that'll be fine.
Just from the planning standpoint or design standpoint of, okay, you know, here's how we measure lighting, the type of fixtures that are available, you know, in either, if you want, cutoff or semi-cut-off, those kind of things. So we'll line that up for the next meeting.
Okay, thanks. Okay. Anything else today related to lighting standards? Okay, well, let's just move on. We'll move on to the next-to-last item on our agenda, which is the public comment period. A few of us, those, I think Bernie, is aware it's a three-minute... If you want to come up and speak, you've got three minutes, and please come up and identify yourself and where you live, if you don't mind, if you wish to make a public comment about anything, not necessarily lighting standards. Does anyone want to take a shot at it?
I'll take a shot.
Okay.
I'm Judy Maddox. I'm chair of the local Sierra Club, the Western North Carolina section, it's called Winoka. I just wanted to add my voice and our voice that we are very supportive of dark skies and very supportive of the three possible additions. We want to congratulate you for the work that you've done on the lighting standards. I wanted to make a couple of comments, very much in favor of regulating the dust-to-dawn poles with the cutoffs, with the shields. I'm one of those bedroom windows, sorry to say. I'm surrounded, or I had two, and now there's a floodlight that's coming in. I have to wear a blindfold to sleep, and I'm sure that that's one of the complaints that you get. But yes, if those lights were just shielded, it would make a tremendous, tremendous difference. The second thing, I guess, I want to say, and I would include certainly both commercial and residential. The second thing I'd want to say in terms of LED, I certainly have been blinded with the different LEDs, the ones that are that bright white-blue, certainly driving, and certainly with the glare. I just wanted to give a brief statistic. I mean, you know that LED is certainly very energy-efficient. This is a statistic from California, just on a simple exit sign, that if the cost of a regular bulb versus an LED bulb is compared, they're pretty much the same in terms of installation, but the yearly cost, ongoingly, the regular light bulb costs fifty dollars a year, the LED light costs six dollars a year, ongoingly. So, I mean, it's just a real clear apples-to-apples. The other thing is it's street lighting, and again, certainly, I think we're... Would like to ask for the full cutoff. And I think you've got the residents of the county... I live outside of the city of Asheville, up north Leicester Highway, and you've got all of us rooting for you. I mean, this is just really significant, and we're really proud that you're dealing with us. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else that'd like to come up and speak? Okay. Again, please identify yourself.
Bernard Argiere. I think you have the spelling by now.
Yeah.
It's A-R-G-H-I-E-R-E. Good morning. Good to speak with you, and...
Good morning.
This is a complicated topic indeed, and I'm glad Shannon was able to give you a presentation. She's very good with this stuff, as you probably know from hearing her. One of the things she mentioned was the LED lights, and it's important, because that's where we're going now. The city of Asheville's putting in all-new street lights. If you go to Kenilworth, you'll see them, they're LEDs. It's important... One of the problems with LEDs, although they're great energy savers, I'm here to speak for them, but there's one caveat, is that if you get the ones with the higher temperature ratings, the high Kelvin ratings, you may have seen the memo I passed out at the last meeting, those are extremely glaring. Most cities are opting not to use the higher Kelvin ratings. They're using the ones with the lower index, forty-three-hundred degrees or lower. So keep that in mind. It's not in the ordinance right now, but the problem is that's where we're going with lights. Progress Energy is installing those now, and so are other utility companies. So it's important that we address that issue, because your ordinance will be almost immediately out of date if you don't address that temperature index. So... And again, with the residential, I commend you for going there, but I'm not promoting you going there for more than that one light we've been talking about, which you can buy at Lowe's or Home Depot or get installed by Progress Energy. It's that dust-to-dawn yard light. That's the one that everyone gets, this staff here at the county, and the city gets all the complaints about. So with that, and of course, I'll again reiterate, street lighting's important. I get lots of calls from people who have just moved into development, and the developers put in one of these lights, I've shown you in my document, that glares into their bedroom window. Full cutoff lights won't do that. So it's important to address that before some homeowner gets stuck with that kind of lighting, so... Anyway, thank you very much for taking this on.
Thank you, Bernie. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak? Okay.
Bernie said...
Okay. Thank you very much. Well, seeing that no one else would like to come forward in the public comment portion of our agenda, I'll consider it closed. It looks to me like, John, that during the month of November, we'll consider some additional comments and the language that you guys recreate, and maybe we'll be able to bring this thing to a vote. Not a vote, but move it forward for public hearing sometime in December, to where we could vote on it in January.
Like you'd mentioned, if, you know, please let me have your comments, email us any of your thoughts in the meantime. It'd be very helpful if you do that.
But you will have the engineer here.
I'll talk to him after the meeting. Hopefully, he'll agree to come back.
Some engineer.
Yeah. If you want, I've got... I'll have a stand-in.
Okay, good.
And do we need to hear any more from Progress Energy?
I think at this point, obviously, they've given the comments. I think that some of the things that they've said have been helpful, and we'll take those and, you know, we'll have that discussion at the next meeting.
Well, I established that timeline with some trepidation based on our last topic that we spent ten months on, but I wanted to reel that back in, actually, but maybe we can work through this fairly quickly. Appreciate everybody's input. I think it's been some good input, particularly Shannon's this morning, helped figure out some things for me. But if there's nothing else, I'll consider the meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Win-win.
[laughing]